It was up there. Yeah, he locked it in. Me neither. I never had it. I don't care for that stuff.
When it gets to the D., just say Sarah will address.
Mike's live?
Yes.
Commissioners, if you'd fill those ballots out and hand them in to Sarah, that would be great.
Oh, oh, you want it?
Good morning. This meeting of the Berry County Board of Commissioners is called to order. Will Commissioner, staff, and guests please stand for our invocation and pledge of allegiance?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to once again come together for the best of Berry County. We love where we live, we love where we work, we love the opportunity to serve in our best capacity. Please grant us the wisdom, the patience, and guide our decision-making so that we can do our very best for all of our constituents. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with ever-taken justice for all.
Please be seated. For purposes of attendance, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Facett. Carlton. Getty. Hatfield. Jackson. Smoker. Tunisson. And Kiowa.
Here. Barely, but he's here, so. Reports from state and county officials, are there any state or county officials with us this morning who'd like to give an update to the board?
Tunisin.
Aye.
And Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved.
C, approval of Commissioner's reimbursement mileage in the amount of $395.50.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Kappa, support by Carlton for approval of Commissioner reimbursement mileage in the amount of $395.50. Discussion. Hearing done, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Getty.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Smoker.
Aye.
Tunisin.
Aye.
And Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved. Items for consideration, Commissioner Kappa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right, A. Just do not ask for a day of vacation around here. A, approval to, prepaid invoices in the amount of $6,000, $6,38,507.12.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Kappa, support by Tunisin for approval in the prepaid invoices in the amount of $6,38,507.12. Discussion. Hearing done, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Carlton.
Aye.
Kappa.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Smoker.
Aye.
Tunisin.
Aye.
Bassett.
Aye.
And Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved.
B, approval of claims in the amount of $98,523.13.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Kappa, support by Tunisin for approval in the prepaid invoices in the amount of $6,38,507.12. Discussion. Hearing done, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Carlton.
Aye.
Kappa.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Smoker.
Aye.
Tunisin.
Aye.
Bassett.
Aye.
And Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved.
C, approval of Commissioner's reimbursement mileage in the amount of $395.50.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Kappa, support by Smoker for, Smoker, Smoker, for approval of claims in the amount of $98,523.13. Discussion. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Kappa.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Smoker.
Aye.
Tunisin.
Aye.
Bassett.
Aye.
And Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved.
Good morning. What time of year again? The Healthcare Cost Containment Committee met in September to review plan options for health insurance for 2026, and we had a new option this year through the pool to be able to offer a mix of Blue Cross and/or Priority Health plans. In the West Michigan insurance pool that we're in, they offer both plans. Typically, in the past, you've never been able to mix carriers, whether that be in the pool or, or elsewhere. The option was available this year, and we did, as a committee, recommend that we keep three of the Blue Cross plans that we had last year, renew those, and then offer one Priority Health HSA plan. All of the plans recommended and all the plans in the pool are PPO plans, and having this option through Priority Health still allows us to offer an HSA plan that does not require an employee contribution to the premium. But you'll notice in the sheet with the cost that's attached that there are some pretty high deductibles with some of these HSA plans, but we found that enrollment in all of the plans we offer is pretty consistent. We don't really have a plan where there aren't very many enrollees, and we do get a lot of employees to enroll in the option that doesn't have a contribution to the premium. So those are the recommended plans. If you have seen in the news, any of the information that's out there about rate increases, it's pretty terrible. Blue Cross has had an average increase for next year of 15.5%, and Priority Health estimated around 13%. By being in the pool, which is actually a self-funded pool with many, many members, we are able to get a lower premium increase than what we would if we were just out in the market. And the average increase this year for the pool was 9.1% as members of the pool. This is the first year that we have experience that they can look at, and we had a lower loss ratio than the pool as a whole, and the pool allows us, in that case, to have a reduction in our rate. So while the pool saw an average of a 9.1% increase in premium, they've reduced the Berry County increase to 8.35%. So while that still seems like a lot, it's great news, half the national average, and so I'll, I'll let Stephanie talk to and point out anything she wants to point out, and, you know, the work of the committee. Stephanie has been extremely valuable in the committee.
I've tried to leave several times. We won't water. Yeah, so I came in from 2009 or 2010, I got on this committee, and so this is the first time in my 15 years of experience that our renewal is below, is below the, the average, and so I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing in terms of our employees' health, but for finances, financially moving forward, I think it's, it's a pretty good thing. We had a lot of discussion on the difference between the Blue Cross and Blue Shield plans and the Priority Health plans, and I think that kind of the winning mindset was that this will allow us to offer an additional plan, that there is no employee contribution. Coverage is a little bit different with Priority Health, but this would allow individuals who have maybe had a rough year and had to spend a lot of their HSA balance, this allows them to have more of a deposit into it, and also allows them to be able to contribute more per pay period, so that's kind of the thought and the hope behind that. Every year, I think everybody waits with bated breath to see this, and every year, it's, it's never great, it's never like we got a slam dunk. I do think that moving to the West Michigan Health Pool, or the Pool now as it's called, even though it came with a lot of administrative challenges, which we have to thank Luella for, because she worked through pretty much every single one of those, think of it as Costco for health insurance, because that's essentially what it is, and all these people go together and then agree to buy bulk. I do think that long-term, it's been better for us, and it's made, I think, our rates a little bit more stable and a little bit more reasonable. Still not, you know, we're not able to offer the tier plans for free, but I think that that environment has definitely gone for good, so.
Awesome. Good work. Questions from Commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So I'm trying to understand how the county operates with the HSAs, the Health Savings Account. Is there right now a county contribution into a Health Savings Account?
Yeah, so if you, if you have the packet information with you on the sheet that shows the proposed health plans, shows the monthly premium, the annual premium, the annual employer contribution, so the annual employer contribution, the county participates in the hard caps as part of the legislation, the PA 152 legislation, and that amount is set by the State Treasury every year for the amount that the employer can contribute to single coverage, two-person and family, so that's what that annual contribution is. So we look at the premium, annual premium, and the annual employer contribution, and if the premium is less than the employer contribution, the employer deposits that difference into the employee's HSA account. So on that sheet, you can see the, the first plan, there is no contribution because it's a traditional plan, it's not an HSA, and then the three HSA plans, one of the plans, the premium is higher than the employer contribution, so there is no employer deposit into the HSA, and then on the two plans there at the bottom of the page, you'll see that there's an employer monthly deposit on, all except the two-person plan on that Blue Cross, Blue Shield PPO. When, when the state legislature set the caps, they really didn't take into consideration how premiums are actually derived, so they just said, well, we'll take the single cap and for two-person, we'll just double it, but that's not really how the industry does the rates. So this has always been a point of contention. There have been, I think, probably numerous attempts to try to get the legislature to change that formula, has not happened, so you will often see that the two-person plan-
For Richards, one vote for Cunningham. One vote for Richards, one vote for Cunningham. And one vote for Richards and one vote for Cunningham. So you have unanimous votes for amateurs for your Democratic nominee and Mike Cunningham for your Republican nominee. And they have, they'll have two years on our board.
Okay, so we do this every two years?
Every two years, yes.
Okay.
Okay, all set?
Questions from commissioners? Okay, we are set.
Thanks.
So the chair would entertain a motion for approval to appoint Ann Richards as the Democratic member and Mike Cunningham as the Republican member to serve on the Board of Canvassers for a term that starts on November 1st, 2025 and ends October 31st, 2029.
I move support.
Okay. Motion by Carlton, support by Smelker for approval to appoint Ann Richards as the Democratic member and Mike Cunningham as a Republican member to serve on the Board of Canvassers for a term that starts on November 1st, 2025 and ends on October 31st, 2029. Any additional discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Hatfield.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Tunisen.
Aye.
Bassett.
Aye.
Carlton.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Anne Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved.
Hi to me, continue on. Excuse me, do we need Luella and Stephanie involved in this? They are here, so we do want them involved in this.
Okay.
Good morning. It's that time of year again. The Health Care Cost Containment Committee met in September to review plan options for health insurance for 2026. And we had a new option this year through the pool to be able to offer a mix of Blue Cross and/or Priority Health plans. In the West Michigan insurance pool that we're in, they offer both plans. Typically, in the past, you've never been able to mix carriers, whether that be in the pool or elsewhere. That option was available this year and we did, as a committee, recommend that we keep three of the Blue Cross plans that we had last year, renew those, and then offer one Priority Health HSA plan. All of the plans recommended and all the plans in the pool are PPO plans. And having this option through Priority Health still allows us to offer an HSA plan that does not require an employee contribution to the premium. But you'll notice in the sheet with the cost that's attached that there are some pretty high deductibles with some of these HSA plans. But we've found that enrollment in all of the plans we offer is pretty consistent. We don't really have a plan where there aren't very many enrollees. And we do get a lot of employees to enroll in the option that doesn't have a contribution to the premium. So those are the recommended plans. If you have seen in the news any of the information that's out there about rate increases, it's pretty terrible. Blue Cross has had an average increase for next year of 15.5% and Priority Health estimated around 13%. By being in the pool, which is actually a self-funded pool with many, many members, we are able to get a lower premium increase than what we would if we were just out in the market. And the average increase this year for the pool was 9.1% as members of the pool. This is the first year that we have experience that they can look at. And we had a lower loss ratio than the pool as a whole. And the pool allows us, in that case, to have a reduction in our rate. So while the pool saw an average of a 9.1% increase in premium, they've reduced the Barry County increase to 8.35%. So while that still seems like a lot, it's great news. Half the national average. And so I'll let Stephanie talk to and point out anything she wants to point out. And, you know, the work of the committee, Stephanie has been extremely valuable in the committee.
I've tried to leave several times. We won't water. Yeah, so I came in from 2009 or 2010. I got on this committee. And so this is the first time in my 15 years of experience that our renewal is below, is below the average. And so I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing in terms of our employees' health, but for finances, financially moving forward, I think it's a, it's a pretty good thing. We had a lot of discussion on the difference between the Blue Cross and Blue Shield plans and the Priority Health plans. And I think that kind of the winning mindset was that this will allow us to offer an additional plan, that there is no employee contribution. Coverage is a little bit different with Priority Health, but this would allow individuals who have maybe had a rough year and had to spend a lot of their HSA balance, this allows them to have more of a deposit into it and also allows them to be able to contribute more per pay period. So that's kind of the thought and the hope behind that. Every year, I think everybody waits with bated breath to see this. And every year, it's, it's never great. It's never like we got a slam dunk. I do think that moving to the West Michigan Health Pool or the Pool now as it's called, even though it came with a lot of administrative challenges, which we have to thank Luella for, because she worked through pretty much every single one of those, think of it as Costco for health insurance, because that's essentially what it is. And all these people go together and then agree to buy bulk. I do think that long-term, it's been better for us and it's made, I think, our rates a little bit more stable and a little bit more reasonable. Still not, you know, we're not able to offer the tier plans for free, but I think that that environment is definitely gone for good, so.
Awesome. Good work. Questions from commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So I'm trying to understand how the county operates with the HSAs, the Health Savings Account. Is there right now a county contribution into a Health Savings Account?
Yeah, so if you, if you have the packet information with you on the sheet that shows the proposed health plans, shows the monthly premium, the annual premium, the annual employer contribution. So the annual employer contribution, the county participates in the hard caps as part of the legislation, the PA 152 legislation. And that amount is set by the state treasury every year for the amount that the employer can contribute to single coverage, two-person and family. So that's what that annual contribution is. So we look at the premium, annual premium, and the annual employer contribution. And if the premium is less than the employer contribution, the employer deposits that difference into the employee's HSA account. So on that sheet, you can see the first plan, there is no contribution because it's a traditional plan, it's not an HSA. And then the three HSA plans, one of the plans, the premium is higher than the employer contribution, so there is no employer deposit into the HSA. And then on the two plans, there at the bottom of the page, you'll see that there's an employer monthly deposit on, all except the two-person plan on that Blue Cross/Blue Shield PPO. When, when the state legislature set the caps, they really didn't take into consideration how premiums are actually derived. So they just said, well, we'll take the single cap and for two-person, we'll just double it. But that's not really how the industry does the rates. So this has always been a point of contention. There have been, I think, probably numerous attempts to try to get the legislature to change that formula, has not happened. So you will often see that the two-person plan tends to be more expensive for the employees. So you'll see on both of those plans that do have an employer HSA contribution, that the contribution to single and family is significantly more than the contribution to two-person.
So the hard cap set for single, double, or family, the plans that annually cost less than that, that's where that contribution to the HSA comes from, and it's once a month. So essentially, the cost for the county, for the employer, is fixed to what the cap is, and then it's just up to the employee to determine what best meets their needs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Bassett, you have a question?
Yeah, I have actually a question and a comment. I'm curious how you're going to be training the staff, because I assume Priority Health has a different PPO network, right? So to make sure the staff understand if they choose that option, make sure that your provider is in the PPO or not, and to understand the difference in the plans.
Yeah.
Because Blue Cross and Priority Health are quite different. So how are you planning to educate people?
That's, that's a good question. So during open enrollment, which I think we're shooting to start November 12th for two weeks, during open enrollment, we will make available information to employees. The summary of benefits for each of the plan will be available. This will be on the Internet. This document, the document that you see here that shows the plans, the contributions, that will be on the Internet. We will have a guide that Gallagher, who administers the pool, will put together for us, and it will have the information in it. But you're right, I mean, there are some big considerations that employees will need to understand that, you know, if you're on a plan with Blue Cross right now and say, for instance, you're on a certain drug where you've kind of done the step therapy and you've gotten it all approved, and now you move to priority, you could potentially have to redo that with priority. And there are some other things, like you point out, the network is a little bit different. So hopefully, employees will take advantage of that. We do always, during open enrollment, too, have somebody here representing Gallagher, who will be probably over in the Titan Center for a day, so that employees can drop in with any questions. We always encourage that. We don't necessarily get a lot of participation. With that, a lot of people just call Stephanie.
We have it every year. It's really poorly attended. Another big change with the Priority Health that I think it's important that we get out there is if you are receiving some type of care that requires a specialist in the PPO network, you do not have to have a referral. But in the Priority Health Network, which is an HMO, you will. You will, you will have to have a referral.
It's a PPO.
It is a PPO. Sorry. Yeah, it is, sorry. Yeah, you'll, you'll still need a referral. But we used to, those of us who have been around a long time, we kind of played this, I don't know, dance, I'll call it, between the Blues, if you will, because for a while we didn't have any Blue Cross. We had one, we always had one Blue Cross plan, but we had to go to all Blue Care Network because of the cost, which was the HMO. And then there were several years where we switched to Priority Health because it was, it was economically, it made sense. And then now we're back to, now we're back to Blues since we've been with the West Michigan, or since we've been with the Pool. And so it's, it's, it's a juggling act. It's never going to be perfect. And for a brain like mine, that's hard.
Yeah, so, I mean, yeah, it's a lot to understand.
Yeah.
I think education is going to be key to it. And I appreciate that you have a plan that people don't have to contribute to it, right? I think that, that was a good choice, so that you can make sure you have a plan.
We've been able to accomplish that, I think, ever, ever since we started offering HSA plans. We, so far, even with these rate increases, still been able to provide at least one plan where the employee doesn't have to contribute to the premium and there's some amount, whether it be small, or in some cases, it's been a pretty decent amount that the employer deposits into the HSA account, so.
But even understanding that is often hard, especially the difference between the actual healthcare plan and the HSA, they're separate. And so, you know, especially for those individuals who are just starting out in their career and they're not used to electing their own healthcare plan and that type of stuff, sometimes there's some surprises, there's some surprises for them that, that come up. And if they reach out, we do the best that we can to help them. But you're stuck with us until next year, but here's how you need to navigate that moving forward, so.
Is this our second year with the Pool?
Yes.
Okay. I think it's fairly easy to say, see the results of that change has been very good. So when we're at half the national average, of course, maybe we're just healthier in Barry County, who knows?
For one year. For one year. It's really, it's really important that this board remembers. We had a number of years where carriers declined to quote. We couldn't even get quotes, that was before you were here, Eric. It was rough, so.
Keep eating the salads, good work, so. Keep it going, so. Any other questions from commissioners?
Just one comment, Mr. Chair. John, Smelker and I, we attended the Matt Conference, and this was one of the seminars we went on. A lot of municipalities are facing a major problem being able to afford, to offer the, to their employees. But the main thing they were talking about was pharmaceuticals, how this is driving the cost up because there's no containment, cost containment on what they can charge. And especially if they have a patent on it, and until the patent comes off, they were majorly saying it's, it's a major problem, that the fact that they can charge whatever they want. And that's what's driving a lot of this.
Yeah. We saw that with the GLP-1 and the GLP-2 medications, you know, it started to be for diabetes and then became for weight loss. And a couple of years ago, Blue Crest had covered them, but this year they quit, right? In January of this year, they stopped.
Yeah, they mentioned that. That just, the cost just got way too much, $1,000, $1,200 a month, and it was just too much.
Couple of other drivers behind the increases. One is just medical inflation, just like everything else. There's, there's been a lot of inflation. And then another driver is they're seeing a lot more mental health and those types of outpatient services, pretty much ever since the pandemic. For one reason or another, that has just really taken off, that there's just a lot more utilization in that area, so.
Great work. Appreciate the time and efforts you guys put into making this happen for us, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Campbell?
I move for the approval of the 2026 proposed Barry County Health Plans for Barry County Employees as recommended by the Barry County Healthcare Cost Containment Committee.
I move. Any support from Bassett? Motion by Campbell, support by Bassett for approval of the 2026 proposed Barry County Health Plans for Barry County Employees as recommended by the Barry County Healthcare Cost Containment Committee. Additional discussion or comments? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Smelker.
Aye.
Tunisen.
Aye.
Bassett.
Aye.
Carlton.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Anne Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved. Morning Jeff.
Hey, good morning commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to present my request this morning. It details, it involves the replacement of the old outdated HVAC controls, heating controls and cooling controls for this building circa 1990. I think that's 35 years, if my math is correct. And so, yeah, it's, it's past time. And so, you know, efficient, you know, we have a pneumatic system, which is run by air, air compressor running, you know, tube, air tubes running all over. We go to a direct digital control system. You have better controllability, way more efficient. There's rebates for this from consumers. There's, yeah, it's just, and then controllability is another one. Right now, for example, planning and zoning sits below the clerk's office, right? The clerk's office has a thermostat. Planning and zoning does not have a thermostat. So we'll put a zone thermostat in each space and zone it and just, there's, so there's just a lot of, lot of advantages as it relates to how the building is controlled. And so, you know, again, ongoing utility savings, you know, we still have some of the older equipment. You know, last fall, we put the new chiller in, which served us really well this summer. So that was nice, that worked out well. So the equipment is still older, but how we control that older equipment with new valves and actuators is a lot more efficient as well, so with the new, new type of devices. So pretty straightforward, the bids, anytime, you know, some of the bids, let me talk about that. Different companies have different business models. Some companies chase after, for lack of better words, chase after every job. They have a lot more overhead than other companies. And so you, you always get a variance of, of kind of those. And listen, I'm not a low bid kind of guy all the time, I'm just going to tell you that, if you've worked with me enough. But, but the company that I'm recommending, Andy Egan, they did put the chiller in. I have a history with them. They have a different business model. They're, they're not as fat, as I would call it, you know what I mean? And they're pretty streamlined. They don't chase after every job. They're selective. And so, yeah. So a couple of things is specific, the 102729 was their quote. I came down here and the 108150 was just a 5% contingency that I put in. Now, a lot of people don't like contingencies, I'm fine with that. If we find something in this old building that we, as the, you know, in the walls of this old building, and we have to do, like you do on every project, we're going to, we're going to make it right, right? And it might cost a little more money. So we'll, we'll deal with that if we need to. So if you, if you feel comfortable with the 102729 and not the contingency, I'm fine with that. I just want to clarify that. So, you know, it was budgeted for 2026, okay? We're getting, I mean, 2025, we're getting towards the end of 2025, so that spend, we can get some of that spend in there. But how we want to deal with that, I can work with Eric, you know, on how we, how we accrue that or whatever that happens or whatever we need to do there.
What's their timeline?
So probably what will happen is we, if we get approval now, we could get done probably about, I'd say by, by spring, you know, late spring, we could probably get done. We'll work all windows through that, you know what I mean? And again, there's communication with the different departments, there's going to be some interruption, but we'll minimize that interruption. We've got ways around that. There's a lot of, when you talk about, we've already got, there's a lot of just running cable, right? I mean, that's a big, labor's a big part of this. And when you get an old building like this, it's tough to run cable and get through and stuff. So that, that's where a lot of it comes from. But yeah, I think we can be up and running by the beginning of summer to get it all controlled.
So this is installing basically zone heat and AC throughout this building?
Yeah, so there's already, I'm sorry, go ahead. Yeah, there's already.
Actuators, cables, all kinds of things.
Yeah, and some of the actuators, new, what we call Blemo valves, that's a, that's a name brand, but new valves on, on the air handlers, okay? New thermostats. And part of this is also, a big part of this is, right now, if I get an alarm or something shuts down in this building, I have no idea until I get here in the morning, right? Courts and Law Building, for example, Health Department Building, you know, at home, I log on to that and I can see, I get alarms. And if I get an alarm, I can get up in the middle of the night, log on, see what's going on, say, ah, I need to get in there. That'll have the ability to do this here, too, remote access. So, which is a big deal, because then you get early detection, right? Which minimizes the damage of something, you know, whether it's a flood or whatever it is. And again, these systems are expandable. We're talking about heating and cooling, but we're talking about, you can, you can control light, you can go crazy on all this stuff, you know? And the nice thing is you don't have to do that now, but if we want to do something down the road, we can do that. You know, this room, for example, right now, has a sensor on it that, because of the unit setting up here, has a water sensor called a little hockey puck, and that thing gives me an early detection on my phone that I can get and see this. Now, we'll expand that. So in case the water floods up there, the condensate drain backs up, then I can get an alarm on that, so. So anyway, there's just a lot of advantages. Again, think about the car you owned in 1990 versus the one you own now, for lack of better words, you know what I mean? So.
That was cooler in 1990, though.
Yeah, well, I was going to say, some of my favorite cars were older, but that's, you know. You know, so, you know, I think that's, that's kind of the, you know, it's pretty straightforward in terms of, in terms of that. But I'm obviously glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from commissioners?
Mr. Hatfield. That bid was only good through the end of August if they extended that.
Here's, with all the tariffs and everything going on, we're good there. We're good there, yeah. No, he's, yeah, I talked to them about that. I've changed this, like, it used to be you could get one for, they'd say a 30-day, but you could last for six months. But with all the volatility of everything, they changed it every 30 days. And so I, I called them, we're good there. That bid is still good. And I, and I can get an updated copy with a, with a proper date, just for our record, that's not a problem. The other thing was, yeah, I talked about the rebates, yep. So yeah, that's, again, pretty straightforward, at least from, from my perspective, but it's another step added. The chiller last fall, we get this, and then we kind of keep moving on to protect the physical assets. Catherine?
The, you talked about the rebate. What, what does that rebate look like? I don't know if it was in here.
Yeah, if you look on, on the Egan bid, it was, it's around $14,000. But again, that's, those are estimates based on, that changes a lot, too.
Oh, I see it.
Yeah, you see it there?
Yeah.
It, it details them, line by line, the automation, the optimal start, the airside economizers, those all have a number to them. Chilled water reset, programmable thermostats, demand control ventilation, yeah.
Thanks to consumers.
So.
This is a consumer's rebate?
Yes. Yeah, they give different.
If we approve this, Greg's going to cut us a check for $14,000 today? Perfect.
Don't do that, it might be, it might be more.
Might be more, all right.
The same sign, this ain't time to check, don't even fill it out yet.
Okay.
Other questions?
Yes.
Well, the only question, guys, so you don't have the contingency built into this?
Well, I put it in at the end, I did. I just said the 5%, you know what I mean? But again, if you don't want to do that and you want to approve them.
I personally think that you're going to run into some situations.
Well, I know we are. So, but again, I know that some people don't like that word. If I put, here's the deal, if I put it in, I'm all right with it. My contractor, like, one of the contractors put, what, a 15% contingency in there, right? And so if they do it, sometimes, if they put it in there, in their mind, that's the new number, right? That's the new number. That's why people don't like that. And so, but there wasn't one in here, but for my, for my, you know, but again, at the end of the day, if I find something contingency or not, we're going to have to, you know, go to Eric and say, hey, this is what we found.
Yeah, and you're going to run into that.
Yeah, so, so whatever you want to approve is fine. If you want, just do the contract amount, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Okay, is that where we're at then, Mr. Chairman? I think you should make the motion for $108,150, which includes the 5% contingency. All right, we're all set.
Yep. All right. I move to approve, to accept and award the proposal from Andy J. Egan Company in the amount of $108,729.
What's that?
$108,729. Thank you.
The one on the bottom where it says under funding, it's $108,150 is the correct amount with contingency.
$150.
Yeah. It's down below, but. Is there support?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Campbell, support by Smelker for approval to accept the award, the proposal from Andy J. Egan Company in the amount of $108,150. Additional discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Tunisen.
Yes.
Bassett.
Aye.
Carlton.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Anne Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved. Thank you, Jeff.
Appreciate it.
Messiah.
Hello.
Can always count on you to make a big board packet for us, you know?
Well, it's October, so I'm here.
Yes.
As I am every October for the apportionment report. I'm not going to go through the entire big packet, because it's basically the same as last year, just with updated millage rates. But I do just want to remind you guys of the process that led up to the subportionment report every year. Basically, it starts after equalization in April. I take a look at the taxable values and determine whether or not headly reduction fractions are needed on millage rates. This is basically to help protect the taxpayers from the government basically having an increased tax, property tax revenue that outpaces inflation. So if that seems to be the case, the millage reduction would be reduced. And then what happens in May is I send out reminders to all of our taxing authorities to say, hey, I need your L4029 tax rate request so we know how much you actually want to want to request and levy within the county. We have 47 taxing authorities that levy a property tax somewhere within the county. And once I start receiving those tax rates, I compile all the results into this report. I also audit those requests to make sure nobody's requesting a levy above the maximum permitted after a headly reduction is applied. So all the results are compiled into this report, and there is a combination of over 200 different tax levies. So depending on where you're living in the county, you can check this report to get an estimated property tax bill. And it's pretty much the same information, just presented in different ways, depending on who needs it. Sometimes the treasurer's use it, the state uses it, and the taxpayers can use it as well.
Excellent work, as always. And as I've told you before, I like the graphs, because being a visual person, to actually see it on a graph versus reading all those numbers, makes a lot of sense to me. Questions or comments from commissioners? There'll be a test, so I hope you memorized it, so.
Yeah, if you can read it.
There you go. No questions?
Good.
Bruce, go ahead.
I move for the approval of the 2025 apportionment report.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Campbell, support by Bassett for approval of the 2025 apportionment report. Additional discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Bassett?
Aye.
Carlton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker?
Aye.
Tunisin?
Aye.
Ann Jackson?
Aye.
The motion is approved. Thank you, Mashiah.
Jeff?
Good morning, everyone. We received a request to remove a piece of property from PA 116, and that property is vacant right now, so there's no address. But it is at the corner of Baseline Road and Banfield Road, at the very southern end of our county in Johnstown Township. As previously discussed in this meeting, that property is owned by Consumers Energy. It's going to be a part of the Spring Creek Solar Project, and it is going to be mostly for a substation. So the Planning Commission voted on September 22nd to approve that and send it to the board for your approval.
Okay. Questions from commissioners? You've seen several PA 116s come across our desk for approval of farmland preservation, and now we're talking about, this is what, our second partial termination of rights for those. So we've had a little bit back and forth on this, but understanding what's going on down there in Johnstown, it makes sense. And Planning and Zoning has already approved this. Commissioner Hatfield, any other input?
No.
Okay. There's no questions? Commissioner Smoker, Commissioner Campbell?
And then that has some residuals backwards on the taxes or something?
There, yeah, there would be some back payment of taxes.
Right.
Because of early-
Correct. Okay. Commissioner Smoker?
And does, would consumers be responsible for the back taxes or with the previous owner?
I do believe it's going to be the new owner.
Consumers.
Yep, he's indicating that.
The ones that put it in.
Yep.
They put in the request.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, Bruce.
I would move for the adoption of Resolution Number 25-28, Resolution for a Partial Termination of a Farmland Development Rights Agreement, Number 08-43627-123125, for PP Number 08-09-033-002-00, as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Support.
Motion by Campbell, support by Hatfield for adoption of Resolution 25-28 for Partial Termination of Farmland Development Rights Agreement, Number 08-43627-123125, for Parcel Number 08-09-033-002-00, as recommended by the Planning Commission. Additional comments or discussions? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Carlton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker?
Aye.
Tunisin?
Aye.
Bassett?
Aye.
Ann Jackson?
Aye.
The motion is approved. Thank you, Jeff. Eric? You would move the podium back a little bit, so we're sure we don't catch any of those drums?
No, I'll stay back here. In your packet, you have a request for a continuation of an agreement with MGT to provide cost accounting plan services. They've been doing this for a while, and this would be for the next three years, at the amounts outlined, for a total of $29,750 for that three-year period. This is something that we do utilize in certain departments, and will probably be a bigger role going forward, where it looks at the costs of the general fund to provide and others to provide for the different funds, so that we can apply those for grant funding and how we bill out things. So that's something that we can consider more in the future.
We've been using MGT for several years, haven't we? I mean, it's not a-
How long? How long?
I think ever since we've been the cost allocation planning-
As long as I can remember.
Yeah, they also do the front of the court reporting every year for us, for the brands.
Okay. This is a, I mean, the reasonable amount, it's a small increase from where they've been. I have, this question could come up amongst many counties who are there using, there are a couple others, but MGT seems to have a lot of people, so we're happy to recommend and continue to work with them.
They've been doing a good job. I don't see any reason to switch with them right now. Okay, Commissioner Campbell?
I move for the approval of the attached master service agreement with MGT Impact Solutions LLC to prepare a central services cost allocation plan for fiscal years 2025, 2026, and 2027, and authorize the chair to sign the agreement.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Campbell, support by Getty for approval of the attached master services agreement with MGT Impact Solutions LLC to prepare a central services cost allocation plan for fiscal 2025, 2026, and 2027, and authorize the chair to sign the agreement. Additional discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Campbell?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker?
Aye.
Tunisin?
Aye.
Bassett?
Aye.
Carlton?
Aye.
Ann Jackson?
Aye.
The motion is approved.
Next item in mind for consideration is the approval of BSNA software for the Treasury Equalization Department in Planning and Zoning. This was budgeted for 2026, and we're asking you to approve it now so that we can get on BSNA's schedule. They won't schedule us until we approve this proposal. And right now, equalization and treasury are looking like late summer, fall of '26 is when the first week we can get on their schedule. So they're that far out. So I don't know, there's a whole bunch more coming, so the longer we wait, if we waited for another meeting or two, we'd probably be into '27. We're hoping that Planning and Zoning can move faster, and the indication is that they will be, because it's a new install. There's no conversion of data, really. And it's a different section of BSNA. So we've, all departments have met with them, we've talked about transition issues. I know Mashiah is very happy to let some others be guinea pigs on the new assess cloud assessing front. But, you know, I think everyone's excited to move forward with this change. This is current software, besides Planning and Zoning, Equalization and Treasury's office uses BSNA right now, so this is just upgrading to the new cloud version. Planning and zoning, we've looked at multiple pieces of software, and I think Jeff will attest, this is the one that was the most cost competitive and met our needs for now.
Okay. BSA is a known commodity. I know a lot of the townships use it, they've been using it, county government, they kind of are the go-to for this type of stuff, so.
Yep, and I think that what works, we're going to be talking to PCI, they're using BSNA for building. So we looked at how Planning and Zoning can closer collaborate on that front, so making sure that people are pulling permits from both sides, and just information sharing. So we got to work through some of those issues, but our hope is that with this transition, we'll be able to put them both on the same platform, so.
Okay, so we're $165,000 for the initial purchase, and then $71,000 annually.
After that.
Is that a five-year contract, or what did they do for us on that?
Yeah, five-year.
Five-year contract, yeah, okay. Questions from commissioners? Everything is subscription-based these days.
Yeah, and so is this $71,000 on top of what you're doing with the other divisions that have?
This, so, the 71 would be for all four pieces of software per year going forward.
Additional questions? Commissioner Campbell?
I move for the approval of the purchase of BSNA software for the Treasury Equalization Department in Planning and Zoning in the amount of $165,530 for the first year, and authorize the county administrator to sign all necessary documents.
Is there support?
No.
Motion by Campbell, supported by Bassett for approval of the purchase of BSNA software for Treasury Equalization Department Planning and Zoning in the amount of $165,530 for the first year, and authorize the county administrator to sign all necessary documents. Any additional discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Getty?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker?
Aye.
Tunisin?
Aye.
Bassett?
Aye.
Carlton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Ann Jackson?
Aye.
The motion is approved.
In your packet, you have a resolution, 25-29, which would need to be filled in with the amount that you choose for whatever increase. Annually, you've taken on the responsibility of setting elected official salaries from the old compensation committee that we had. This, by statute, needs to be done before tomorrow. There's the period of time, mid-September to mid-October, that you have to set this. And if you recall from last year's discussion, you set a base for this current term that the elected officials are in, you cannot reduce their salary below that amount. You can increase it whenever, unlike the commissioners, you can't touch your salary for the next four years. For these officials, you can increase every year if you so choose. You just cannot decrease it below the 2025 amount. So we've given you a few options, four different options, on what the percentage increase would look like for each elected official. Last year, we did a comparable study of counties across our region that were comparable to, from a population SEV standpoint. And we've made some adjustments based on that, and based on the previous year's increases to union staff and non-union staff. But this year, we're just giving you some options to look at, and if you recall, we put a, we budgeted for a 3% increase for these officials, so you can make, if you wanted to go to 5, you could. We would just make a budget amendment at some point down the line. If you go to 2.5, you could. We would just see a half percent savings on that.
We can't go to minus 2.5.
You cannot go to minus anything.
No minus anything. I think when we discussed this last year, we had talked about basically 3% over the four-year term. That was kind of what we had thought or what we were looking at, and based on inflation numbers between 2.2 and 2.8, I think that's a fair assessment, right at 3%. But I'm open for any input, questions or discussion? Comments? Commissioner Tunisin?
I agree with you, Mr. Chair. I think we kind of set that tone last year at 3%, and I think that's a fair number.
Yeah, we have, I think, am I correct, all of our bargaining units are still open at this point?
That's correct.
So we don't know how those numbers are going to come in, and we can certainly look at that next year and make revisions if needed, but I think 3% is probably a fair number this year going forward. Additional comments, concerns?
Just a clarification, you said tomorrow is the deadline, so we can make changes during their term of office, but we can only do it during that period of the year?
No, I mean, you could set, you have to set a salary for '26 by tomorrow, if any change. You don't have to change it at all if you don't want to. Just by statute, you set salaries at that point. If there was a reason to change, we'd have to go back to council and make sure that there's no issues in doing so. But county statute sets to September, I think it's 14th, October 15th, period, to set in, it's your annual meeting, to set those salaries.
Additional questions or comments? I will recommend the 3%, if that's acceptable. Commissioner Campbell?
I move for the adoption of Resolution Number 25-29, Resolution approving salaries for 2026 for non-judicial countywide elected officials.
Let's just add at 3%.
To be set at 3%.
Okay. Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Campbell, support by Tunisin for adoption of Resolution 25-29, a Resolution approving salaries for 2026 for non-judicial countywide elected officials at 3%. Additional discussion?
Above 2025.
What's that?
A 3% increase.
3%.
Not at 3%, that would be a slight reduction.
Okay. You can't do that, right?
No, you can't do that.
Additional questions or discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker?
Aye.
Tunisin?
Aye.
Bassett?
Aye.
Carlton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Getty?
Aye.
Ann Jackson?
Aye.
The majority of you may recall from last year, we had a lot of discussion about setting
a chief deputy salaries for our elected officials. If you recall, we have to set them in the same manner that we set the elected official salary. Unfortunately, we were hoping to have some of our labor negotiations resolved. At this point, we still have a few chief deputies that are within the unions, there are three of them, Registered Deeds Treasurer and Drain Commissioner, their chief deputies are still within the Courthouse Association. We were working through that with that labor union, but until that issue's resolved, we're not making any recommendations to change their salaries. They'll be set at, with per gain contract when January 1st comes up. Our hope is that we'll have it resolved by then, but you still have a base salary at that point. We still, although, that being said, we have three positions that are outside of the union that you need to set for the '26 year. So again, we give you a few percentage increases to look at, and as your discretion, just need you to vote which one.
Same question, we can revisit this at any time.
This one is, you have to set them in the same manner. You can revisit any time during the term, if you're going to revisit it outside of the annual meeting, we'll just clarify that, when and if the time comes.
I, my only reservation is that we're still in contract negotiations, and, yeah, what we may or may not do with those has an impact on the appropriateness of these numbers, so...
But at this point, we do need to set something for '26 for these three people.
I'm going to recommend the same, 3%. That's acceptable? Okay. Commissioner Campbell, go ahead.
All right. I move for the approval to set the following salaries for 2026 to be reflective of a 3% increase for the Chief Assistant Prosecutor, the Undersheriff, and Chief Deputy Clerk.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Campbell, support by Carlton for approval to set the salary for 2026 at 3% for the Chief Assistant Prosecutor, Undersheriff, and Chief Deputy Clerk. Additional discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Bassett?
Aye.
Carlton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker?
Aye.
Tunison?
Aye.
And Jackson?
Aye.
The motion is approved.
I move for the approval to accept the actual cash value from MMRMA of $14,000 and direct them to sell the 2019 Chevrolet Tahoe VIN number 1GNLCD-EC3KR348184 for salvage to the highest bidder and approve up to $68,500 to purchase and equip a new Tahoe with funds to be paid from the vehicle fund.
Okay, is there support?
Support.
Okay. Luella, would you like to give us some input on this first?
Sure. So occasionally, we have county vehicles that are involved in accidents or collide with objects. Typically, with the Sheriff's Department, it's a deer. And not as often, we have situations where those result in the vehicle essentially being totaled. And when that occurs, MMRMA gives us two options. They can either pay us the cash value, or we can keep the vehicle and fix it and drive it. But they don't always say that if we choose that option, that they're going to support that. So those are your options. This was a first in my tenure here, but this vehicle from the Sheriff's Department collided with a horse. So, as you can imagine, quite significant damage to the vehicle. The employee was uninjured, so that's the most important thing. And there is a new Tahoe available with the MyDeal pricing. So if this gets approved today, we'll be able to purchase that vehicle and go through the process of getting it equipped and getting it back on the road.
Is this one of the vehicles that we had already approved for purchase, or is this an additional vehicle for the Sheriff's Department? I know we're rotating them through on a cyclical basis.
Yeah, so typically, we replace two to three Tahos a year. And we have, I believe, two Tahos in the budget this year for replacement. This was an older Tahoe, so this was not one of them that was being replaced. This will now, if this is approved, be replaced by a new Tahoe. So I don't know if that impacts, I'm looking at Kevin, if this would impact maybe the next year's replacement schedule, maybe they would need one instead of two.
Three next year.
It's three next year.
We ask Kevin, Mr. Chair?
So maybe two to three.
You can ask Kevin.
Yeah.
He's right back.
Kevin, could you come up and answer that?
I'll do my best.
Put you on the spot.
Yeah. To be transparent, that would probably be a game time decision, because this is one of our high-mileage vehicles. So we'll probably have to discuss that next year, but for the time being, it would be good to replace it.
Okay. All right, so it's not one of the ones in the normal rotation. This is an additional vehicle coming in.
Correct, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Smoker?
Can you tell me how many vehicles you have, and how many do you need?
How many that we have currently?
Yeah.
I don't have it memorized, Mr. Smoker. I don't.
Did you have a spare one for the officer to be driving?
Yeah, there's a spare one currently, but that's also got 150-some thousand on that one, too. So we're just, we're getting by by the skin of our teeth right at the moment.
I know we're a no-fault state, but does the owner of the horse have any liability for this at all?
We're still looking into that part.
Was it on a roadway?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Animals on there.
So it seems like there would be some liability in there somewhere.
Correct, sir.
But, my thinking. Additional questions? Input? Down, there's something floating around there.
I'm for someone getting the cash value, I'm not for buying the money at this time.
No other discussion? Okay, we had a motion by Campbell and support by Carlton for approval to accept the actual cash value from MMRMA of $14,000 and direct them to sell the 2019 Chevrolet Tahoe VIN number 1GNLCD-EC3KR348184 for salvage to the highest bidder and approve up to $68,500 to purchase and equip a new Tahoe with funds to be paid from the Vehicle Equipment Fund. Any additional discussion or questions?
I got one thing, I'm sorry, Marcia. Regarding this horse that was hit, it just seems to me like the owner, their homeowners or whatever, should be responsible for more than what we're obviously going to be getting out of this vehicle, $14,000. So I mean, how do we look into this? I mean, Eric, I mean...
We can request of MMRMA to look into that. Kevin, do we have the information on the owner? Okay. If you provide that, we'll send that off to them and see if they can look into that for us.
Just send them a bill for $68,500, please, and let them know that it's just the price, so...
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Campbell?
Just for clarity on my part, I actually had the pleasure of hitting a cow one time with a car, and the owner of the cow did pay with their homeowner's insurance to replace that.
Okay.
So just something.
Good information. Commissioner Bassett?
Two-part question. I guess I don't understand the vehicle fund, so if someone could explain that to me, where, you know, I realize it's a budget line item, but how is that administered? And then number two, if we do decide to just take MMRMA money and not replace the vehicle, how do we handle that today?
Luella, you want to take that?
So the vehicle fund question. Yeah, so the vehicle fund is a special revenues fund that we set up a number of years ago. And as you're probably familiar, at the end of the year, we usually bring a resolution to the board to take any general fund surplus and transfer it to the special revenue funds. We have one for data processing or information technology. We have one for vehicles. We have one for building rehab. We have one that's just called capital replacement, and it's kind of a more general for, you know, if we have to replace chairs, furniture, we've used it to purchase tasers and bulletproof vests. So we have these surplus funds that we transfer the surplus to. We let those kind of build up the fund balance. And then those are the places that we go to when we're budgeting to buy new vehicles, when we're budgeting for software, we're, you know, doing small renovations or any, you know, of the building rehab, just to kind of keep our buildings going. So that's been kind of the funding mechanism for a number of years, something that, you know, in the future, if the board decides that you, you know, want to look at a different way to budget for those. But this has kind of worked to be able to handle some of these expenses that come up, especially like the mid-year, without hitting the general fund. So that's the description of the vehicle fund. So the Sheriff's Department, they typically, they have a rotation of vehicles, and every year in their budget, they request anywhere from usually one to three vehicles for replacement based on mileage of the vehicle. So with this one, this is kind of a mid-year, just happened, but that money would still become from the vehicle fund if we choose to replace it. And then we will certainly pursue with MMRMA if they're able to collect anything from the person who owned the horse, from their homeowners, and, you know, that could potentially offset it. And this money here, this $14,000 that we would get from MMRMA, would go into the vehicle fund.
Yeah, I'd appreciate you following up on that based on Commissioner Campbell's comments, just to see if there's any financial repercussions there.
I have a question. Is there a copy of the accident? I assume there was an accident report, you know, the circumstances under which this happened? There, I believe there was a police report in, it was sent to MMRMA when we filed the claim.
Additional questions or comments?
I was just curious, maybe I missed, what kind of a balance do we have in that vehicle fund right now?
I don't have it with me, but if you want to stop down after the meeting, I can...
It would just be instrumental on knowing.
Right.
Spending.
Usually it's got enough in it to compensate for a vehicle. There's several vehicles, so we keep it pretty flush. So, okay. You've heard the motion made by Campbell, by Carlton. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Campbell?
Aye.
Gaddy?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker?
Aye.
Tunison?
Aye.
Bassett?
Aye.
Carlton?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
The motion is approved.
All right, and the next item, reclassification of two legal secretary positions in the prosecutor's office. Do you want me to go ahead?
Yeah, please.
Okay. So a few months back, we had a legal secretary position in the front of the court. A reclassification request was submitted, and while it's not exactly the same position it was, placed at the same grade level in the compensation study that we had back in 2015, 2016. And that, the front-of-the-court position was recently reclassified and retitled. Now we have two legal secretaries in the prosecutor's office that felt that their positions had changed, and they wanted us to look at reclassification. The union brought this forward, but Julie was also supportive of the reclassification request. So this came before the committee. We looked at the changes to the job description and the scoring, and the revised positions increased the grade from a grade four to a five. It's not expected that we need additional funds if this is approved for 2025, but we'll kind of keep an eye on it. They did have a period of time where they had some over, or basically time where a position was vacant while they were hiring new people. So I think the budget can support it for this year.
That was my question. I saw there was no funding required, so that's always good, but that makes sense with the comments for the description of action. Questions from commissioners?
So with the grade five, what is approximately the compensation that this will result in?
I can tell you the top of the grade five, that's not where these employees are. I don't remember the starting wage. The top of the grade five is $23 an hour.
Okay.
Twenty-three, okay.
These are both newer employees, so they're at the lower end of the pay scale. And the union contract does say that when a position is reclassified or person moves to a higher classification, they go to the step on that pay scale in that grade that is closest to 5% increase without being less than 5%. So that usually translates if a position is just changing by one grade, say it's going up one grade like this position, they were at the four-year step, the top step, in their current grade. Typically, that 5% increase would put them at the top step in the new grade that's just one grade higher. If there are multiple grades, then, you know, you would be looking at a situation where an employee might have been at the top of the pay scale, you know, in that step. But when they move to the new position, if it's a couple of grades higher, they might move to the step, the one-year step or the two-year step, somewhere less than the top step. These employees, like I said, they don't recall if they're at the higher rate or the one-year rate, but they will not go to the top step in the grade five. It'll take them some time to progress through that.
Okay. We've already done this for a legal secretary in other places.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Additional questions? Commissioner Campbell?
I move for the approval of the attached legal secretary job description and reclassification to grade level five on the BCCEA pay scale.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Campbell, support by Carlton for approval of the attached legal secretary job description and reclassification to grade level five on the BCCEA pay scale. Additional questions or discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Carlton?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gaddy?
Excuse me. Aye.
I don't know what that was.
That was bad timing.
Hatfield?
Aye.
Smoker?
Aye.
Tunison?
Aye.
Bassett?
Aye.
And Jackson?
Aye.
The motion is approved. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, we have none. County administrators, report.
Just a few things. One, wanted to let you know, remind you all that I will be sending the MERS conference the rest of this week up in Traverse City, and I will be reporting back to Commissioner Smoker if the food's colder than the plate. Make sure he knows if he can go back or not, if it was just for...
We need photos.
Yeah, I will. Couple other things. We are still really working between Luella, Matt Ward, Barb, and my office, really working on the ERP software solution. We felt we were on one path, but we've heard from too many other communities, so we've deviated from said path. So we're revisiting that issue. Some problems with the software we were going to look at at the time, which happens to be our current provider. So our new modules don't look promising for what we need. So we are hurriedly trying to deal with that. Hopefully, we'll have more to by the end of the month. If not, it'll be first part of November, because we need to make a decision, one way or another. So there's that. And I had one other thing on my head that happens, to get stuck in an issue. Yeah, I think that's, if what I remember, I will, I'll let you all know, but...
This is the ERP software we were talking about in the $450,000 range, expensive, but the driver for everything we do in administration in several of the departments, so...
It is. We were, Tyler was the $450,000 price. So we'd hoped to have like a unified software approach on this. It may end up being where we go payroll, HR with one vendor, and financials with another vendor. Some of the feedback we're hearing from people is they may be great at financials, and that's what they do, the GL software, but they are horrible at payroll, and nothing's turning out right. And it's kind of like we're a financial software company, we just kind of add on these modules. And I don't want to get us into a position where we move to software and just everything does not work the way it should. If payroll's screwed up, that's a problem. So we're not willing to pull that trigger when it comes to that movement, maybe, I'm just going to say it, maybe BSNA for financials and somebody else for payroll. There are other software vendors out there we're dealing with. We just, I'm going to figure the right path forward for Barry County.
Okay.
Oh, and then I just thank you for giving me that time, because I did remember my last thing. We had 10 applicants for the deputy administrator's position. Commissioner Hatfield and I reviewed them and have selected four for right now for first interviews, which we're shooting for next week. Commissioner Hatfield, myself, Dave DeHan from Raymond, our accounting consultant, and one of our department directors will be sitting in on the interview panel. So we'll hopefully know more next week and see if we have a candidate. If not, we'll continue the search.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chairperson's report? I am all set with one exception, that we are going to do several interviews the first Tuesday in December. So normally, we're having VOCs the second and fourth. Our VOCs in December are going to be the second and third Tuesdays, and we're adding a VOC, a special VOC, for the first Tuesday in December to do multiple interviews for several different county appointments. So there'll be probably somewhere between 12 to 15 different applicants, but that'll be all that's on the agenda for that day. So if you can just put that in your calendars, that'd be good.
So every Tuesday, first, second, and third Tuesday, and then we're off for the holidays?
Correct. be all that's on the agenda for that day. So, if you can just put that in your calendars, that'd be good.
So, every Tuesday, first, second, and third Tuesday, and then we're off for the holidays.
Correct. Correct. Vice Chairperson's report.
I have nothing.
Commissioner reports. Commissioner Bassett.
So, during the break, this long break we've had, I did attend the Conservation Board and then Barry County Community Mental Health and the SWIMBA regional meeting. Something important that's happening at SWIMBA at the regional level, you know, you've heard about what's going on with the PHPs and whether or not they're going to privatize those. And just before the SWIMBA meeting, there had been something going on at the state. And with that is that there's been, the current regional mental health entities have been meeting with a judge or presenting to a judge to determine if the current regional entities can apply to do the PHT, right? So, now, they're going out to basically private entities, can the current entities submit. And so, they had submitted all that. Apparently, it was quite a process. It is available online if you want to watch. I guess it was quite a bit of good discussion about it. And the judge is supposed to return today with his decision on what they're going to do about that. So, it's very important. Our entity, SWIMBA, was scrambling to put together the RFP, and then we'll find out if we could even reconsider it, hopefully today, which I will rule on that. So, that's kind of a big deal going on at that level. And then, let's see, tomorrow night, I think we have Glib and Prairieville, so we have a time.
Commissioner Colton.
Nothing.
Commissioner Gaddy.
Nothing.
Commissioner Smoker.
Went to Thornapple and Freeport. Also, Bob and I went to MAC. I sat through workshops for Blue Cross Blue Shield, prices going up, and mental health. And they are trying their best to keep the mental health sane and well, try to better. And the speakers they had there, one was a retired CIA officer. He pretty well convinced me not to trust anybody. I trust Bob. There wasn't one of them who was a drywaller. They're all haters and...
John, they're not that dumb.
That's all I got.
Whoa. Commissioner Campbell.
I visited Johnstown. Basically, down there, they have a serious rough problem down there that they're trying to cure, and also, they're working on a lot of special assessments. And I also visited Assyria Township where they just appointed a new trustee, Josh Miller, who is the son of the recently passed Jim Miller. And they did have three applications for that, so that was a good positive. And I know Greg has already left, but I was going to, wanted to thank him for always, he always shows up at the Johnstown Township meetings, and plus or minus, whatever comes out of the meeting, he's always there representing consumers, and so appreciate that he shows up for that.
Absolutely. Commissioner Tunisen.
Attended Rutland last week, Carlton last night, and I'll have Aysden Shatter tonight, so...
Okay. Thank you. Limited public comment at this time. Any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes for anything you'd like to talk to us about.
One last thing. Eric Suska, 4169 South Shore Drive. So, the Court of Appeals last week, we led down a decision on the Wayside case, which was a settlement that was put in for the, sorry, excess taxes on foreclosures. So, it was, it puts in place a process and a structure of how things will be going forward for some of our older cases. That was approved. Iowa was at the land bank conference when this happened, and every county treasurer was ecstatic because it really, it limits our exposure and puts in place that structure. So, the petitioners do have the ability to go to the U.S. Supreme Court, which everyone expected them to do, but at least it further, it's another court decision that supports the direction that we've gone in this issue. So, that would be good news for us. We've done a good job, Michael and Sue in the past, in not spending those proceeds that we have. So, we have no sizable amount. So, when we have any claims that do come in, we're comfortable with, it's not going to hit our general fund, so...
Have we had claims?
Yeah, we have five lawsuits right now going on with this issue, but they're all based on, they keep finding for us. It's just going through the process, and it keeps getting appealed. So, but yeah, there are people that put in, and there are people that put in their claims for, when it does go to foreclosure, that they want the excess proceeds.
This one, we were partying to a lawsuit in a year or so ago where they had, you had 90 or 120 days to file a claim at that point.
Yeah. So, there's a lot of that in place, and it's a tough issue, but it's one that had the potential to bankrupt some counties. Thankfully, we're not in that position because of the decisions that were made. I just wanted to let you know that if this continues on, I think it's good for us in the long term. It gives us some finality. If the Supreme Court upholds it too, at some point, we'll know, hey, this is where our exposure is. This is what people who have been foreclosed on will be paying back out. So, just an FYI.
Okay.
Obviously, much more to come on that.
Yeah. Yes. Thank you. Additional public comment?
I want to clarify the Board of Canvassers appointment. That's for a four-year term. I think we stated, we stated two years. I agreed with you. But then, we do have to, every two years, appoint, so it's a rolling two years that we have to select people. So, I just wanted to publicly correct myself.
Okay. Four-year terms. Every two years, we select two more.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional public comment? Hearing none. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Bassett?
So, I had the privilege of attending the ribbon cutting in the new Ignite manufacturing lab at Don Kellogg High School yesterday, and I hope you see photos because it was a lot of people there, and there's super positive response to what we're doing at Dalton. They have the students who are in the program right now attend, and all the people from the LIFT program, the Michigan Manufacturing Association. There was people from Tom Albert's office came, people from the chamber came, and it was really a wonderful program, and it recognized not only Don Kellogg schools, but Barry County as, you know, they're very happy that they were investing in this district, in this county. And they're, you know, just further discussions about what we can do in Barry County. So, just, you know, just a wonderful day to celebrate all that, and to see it is amazing. It's a $500,000 grant. You see all this equipment there and talking about how these students are going to graduate from high school, and 95% of them will get jobs right away, paying good money at local manufacturers, and this is huge. And had lists of all the certificates they're going to get. You'll probably see and hear about that in the paper. I want to say 12 to 16 different certificates that these students will walk away with. And just a lot of great excitement for that. And then, next Thursday, we do have our next bimonthly revitalized Dalton community meeting when the Clark Brothers will present what's the current status of the housing development in Dalton, as well as plans for some beautification in downtown Dalton, where we're receiving some grants and some donations and sponsorships to put a little pocket park in downtown Dalton. So, nothing to do, cider and donuts at the high school, 6:30 next Thursday night. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Colton.
Nothing.
Mr. Gaddy.
Nothing.
Commissioner Smoker.
Mr. Tunisen.
Well, on that note, Chris Stafford here in Hastings has been a huge advocate for vocational training, and I think he's trying to work something out with KCC on that here in Barry County. So, my hat's off to him for what efforts he puts into trying to help the youth here in our area, no different than Dalton. He is involved with that, too. But I give him a lot of credit for the effort that he puts into trying to make better lives for our kids in high school, with different avenue than what's going into trades. So, buy good jobs in trades if kids apply themselves and show up to work.
Well, I think, I think what they were saying is our base, 35% of the residents are manufacturing-based jobs in here, or 35% of the employment are manufacturing-based jobs. So, great programs from Dalton and from Chris and what they're doing in the area to help filter or feed into that system, so great. Commissioner Camp, oops. Do you have a comment?
Well, just to continue that, I mean, it's been almost a 20-year effort to really change the attitude toward CTE, Career Technical Education, programs and make sure that our high schools are not only preparing those kids that want to go to college to go to college, but they're also providing those that don't have that mindset an opportunity to learn important trade skills. And there's another millage request, you know, coming up next month, which will further enhance those CTE efforts through the ISD to our participating high schools, which Dalton and Hastings, so...
Okay. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you. I'm going to take off my commissioner hat from it and put on my VFW commander hat. The VFW out there, Donnie Hall, I don't know if anybody's familiar with him, but he was a very big figure in Dalton for many, many years. If you, if you're from the Dalton area, Donnie Hall didn't help you at one time or another. You were a real lucky person. He was always, he ran the CNH service out there for many years, and also, for many years, he's been putting on a large fish fry to help nonprofit, help people in need, whatever. He always insists on do not charge anything at the door. I will take donations, but that's the kind of guy he was, and we're fortunate enough, he's coming to the VFW on Saturday night, so if you prefer fish over Greg's spaghetti, come over and see us at the VFW, 5 to 7. And also, we're throwing out a little fun thing this year, Halloween, where we're toting as adults wanting to be kids again, party. It's a big dress-up party for adults and stuff with the live band and all that, so that's the following weekend on the 25th. So, this has not been a paid political announcement, but I hope somebody shows up and enjoys it.
It'll be fun. Yes, Commissioner Hatfield. Thank you. Well, we've had a little bit of a taste of what our new schedule is now like. You know, we had a very, a fairly lengthy agenda of items for consideration, and we got through that in good shape with, I think, a great discussion, and we don't have to come back and revisit that again next week in order to ratify it. We've made the decision. So, to me, it's a very logical and reasonable process.
Absolutely. 10 years of doing this, and we've been talking about it for 10 years, so it'll, it's good to see it in action, and then we can discuss it first of the year to see what we're going to do with it.
You know, we, as a group, you know, we said we wanted to address some issues and make some changes, hopefully for the better. So, hopefully, this is one for the better.
The problem is, I really missed you guys for three weeks, so you know...
Oh, we missed you, too, but...
Terrible.
We saved a lot of trees.
You saved a lot of trees. You saved for all.
I am all set with the exception of, I appreciate the other three commissioners who are working with us on the jail project. The charret's coming up at the end of the month. We're going to spend probably four hours debating some ideas, bringing the whole stakeholder crew together to talk about it in a little more detail. And then, I'm hoping in November, we can have a presentation to this board from Aber Marsh Vice, really to vet this whole thing with you guys, to be sure everybody's on the same page with what some of the decisions or some of the guidance that that stakeholder committee is recommending, so we can just put a plan together and move forward. So, with that exception, have a nice week off next week. Enjoy the beautiful fall weather, while it lasts, and we will see you in two weeks. Have a great day.